Good evening, welcome to the Medfield School Committee meeting of Monday, May 18th. We've been in executive session for the purpose of discussing contract negotiations. And I'm pleased to report, although nothing's definitive, I know it's been an issue of concern for the community, that we, the subcommittee of the school committee has reached an agreement in principle with the negotiating committee of the teachers. I understand the teachers have scheduled a vote for tomorrow. We're hopeful that we'll be in a much better place and that we can, as a school committee, vote approval within our next meeting. The agenda tonight, we have a couple of minutes to approve high school advisory, student advisory council presentations, which I'm always looking forward to at this time of year. Did you bring a special, did you bring anything special for us? Magic tricks? All right. Love it. The, I understand the varsity girls basketball team would like to present tech collaborative, we're gonna vote on another amendment to that agreement.
We can table that, actually.
Okay. An update on full day kindergarten, selectmen disorder is here, gives an update on, or presentation on civic engagement. Is that right? That fair statement? Okay. We're gonna form a strategic planning subcommittee, or confirm that. Update school committee meetings for next year. There's gonna be an adjustment to the school calendar, which I think relates to the collective bargaining agreement, right?
It's actually for the prom.
SAT, right?
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
SAT and prom.
We have to vote on a certification for the town, and we have some superintendent's reports, some old business. We also, in new business, there was a late agenda item, some representatives from MCP are here, and we'll take them up after the varsity girls basketball, if that's okay. Without further ado, the high school student advisory council.
Hi, I'm Jordan Wyczek. We, as the ninth grade student government, this past month, we did a fundraiser at the lacrosse games, and we sold baked goods to fundraise for prom. I know it's still kinda early, but we're still trying to like, trying to get as much funds as we can before like, it doesn't creep up on us. We made over $200, which is really good. And it didn't, we didn't have a lot of, we didn't have to pay for a lot, because we all just made it from our house. So it was good. Also, as a grade, we're all like, starting to prepare kinda for finals, 'cause it's our first time taking finals. Teachers are really helping us with this, like, trying to get comfortable, 'cause I know that we're all kinda nervous, but it's been so easy, like, the past, with midterms and stuff. We're like, no, it's gonna be okay. Also, student council, we did a fundraiser, or not really a fundraiser, but it was like, kiss the senior goodbye, and you could send like, Hershey kisses to seniors with notes on them, like, for 25 cents, like, to kiss them goodbye, and they send them like, a note. So it was good. It's been a good two months, or past two months.
Thank you.
All right, good job.
You gonna do Tom's too, Erin?
Yeah, Tommy's, I think he's at his sister's graduation so far, so he can't be here.
It's a pretty lame excuse, but we'll excuse him.
I think they're doing pretty well, fundraising, I don't really know though. I don't really know.
That's great. We appreciate their report on their final.
But as you know, our focus this year's been prom, so we had that, not this past Friday, but the Friday before, and it went really well. We had around 375 people attend, and it was in the Putnam Club at Gillette, and we had a DJ, which, they also had a photo booth, so that was really popular. And they, we did the buses again, so the school, like, the PTO set up buses, so I know like, limousines are kinda hard to get, and they're expensive, so a lot of kids met in the high school, and you can take pictures there, and then you load the buses, and you head over to Gillette. I think it was pretty fun, 'cause you're with, like, not just the people at your pre-party, but also mortgaging your grade and the other grades, so that was fun. Also, this past Sunday, for student council, we went to the Great Strides Walk. It's for cystic fibrosis. So the Chofi family, I don't know if you know them, they have a team, they're, there's three girls in the family, and they all have cystic fibrosis, but it's a mild case, fortunately, so it's good. But they did it for the Palermos. I'm not sure if you know them either, but they had three children, they all had cystic fibrosis, and they passed away the past couple of years, so they walk in memory of them, they're the Palermo Warriors. So we went to the walk around 12, it started, and it's a 5K, and then there's a barbecue after, so it's fun to raise money for a good cause, and then hang out together as a group. I'd also like to say that recently I was elected vice president, so unfortunately, I will not be rep to the school committee next year, which makes me sad that this will be my last meeting. It's been a good three years.
Who's taking your place?
What?
Who's gonna try to fill your footstep?
I don't know, it's gonna be hard, though. But maybe you'll see me in the crowd next year.
Always welcome.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Well, thanks Erin, thanks for all you've done. You've done a great job.
Hello.
If there are no magic tricks, I'm leaving.
I am Andy, also known as the One With Glasses, also known as the Notorious A, and I'm the senior of the school committee, as you know, 'cause I met you all before, just for benefit of the uninitiated in the crowd. Now, I went to prom, I didn't really have much to do with planning it, but I can say Erin and her peers did a pretty good job. I had fun, my friends had fun. I stayed till like, pretty much the end, and it was a good time. Now, so, as seniors with three days of school left, there's not like, a ton going on with our student government, but one thing is the class gift. We're working on the pricing information with that. Our plan is to get a couple of like, the water fountains that are specifically made, so you can fill a water bottle, it's like a spigot from the top, and put one like, down with the athletics, and one like, the lobby, so it should be useful. And we're also working on planning the night at Four Kicks, which is instead of the senior picnic, or is the senior picnic, and where we rent out like, all Four Kicks for the night, and we just get the run of the place, and give us food, and we have an excellent time. And there recently was a slight debacle with our class president, but everything's, everything's under control now. And really, what we're all looking towards is graduation. And on my agenda here, I have a little frowny face, and I have a little smiley face to represent my next two points. Frowny face, like, it's sad. Like, I'm standing up here, and this is my last time, probably, that I'll be in this room, at this podium, talking to you, unless my grades tank in the next few days.
Or if you have a career as a superintendent.
And so it's kinda bittersweet. This, I just got this from the student council banquet, which, another thing, it's ending, like, everything's ending, and it's melancholy, but smiley face comes after the frowny face to show that it's more. And we're all, we're all also really excited, 'cause like, I'm leaving the school committee, but I'm going off to other things, I don't wanna say better things, but you know, equivalent quality things. And, oh, and I'll be speaking graduations, like, if you wanna get your fix, you can come there. And that is-
Does he speak before me or after?
I don't know. I don't know.
And that's really all the news I have.
He's been with me all week in Vegas, too.
I'd just like to, for the past, thank, for the past four years, everyone who's made this be fun, Henry, Andrew, Dennis, them, Riley, even JJ, and of course, members of the school committee, these illustrious fellows. And I would like to close with a quote from George Washington's farewell address.
Really? He told me he was doing this, I thought he was kidding.
"In looking forward to the moment which is intended to terminate the career of my public life, my feelings do not permit me to suspend the deep acknowledgement of that debt of gratitude which I owe to my beloved country for the many honors it has conferred upon me, still more for the steadfast confidence with which it has supported me, and for the opportunities I have thence enjoyed of manifesting my inviolable attachment by services faithful and persevering, though in usefulness unequal to my zeal."
Well done, Andy.
That really speaks to me, not just because it's hard to understand, just like the inter machinations of my mind. Thank you very much, you've been a wonderful audience.
Andy, I just- I have to say, both to you and Erin, you know, it's been a great pleasure to watch both of you come in. Erin came in three years ago, two years ago, as a meek, somewhat shorter presenter, with very shy, always had everything written out, and to see her up there today, just sort of extemporaneously off the top of her head, cracking jokes, just, we're so proud of you. Andy, I'd like to say you've progressed like that, but you've kind of always been. We've been impressed with you from the first day you came in, and we really appreciate all you bring, and we learn a lot, believe it or not, you know, we don't all have kids in high school, so we learn a lot from all of you. It's an important role, and we thank you very much for doing it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much.
All the best.
Now, the volleyball team had to sit through you, so you at least have to, we usually excuse you after you're done, but you should at least sit for them.
Basketball.
Oh, basketball team, I bet. Sorry. I'm heading towards graduation, too. Marion, you got the memo to match them.
Now I know why Richard so happily switched places with us. I don't, I wouldn't wanna follow that either. I wanna thank you for letting us speak here today. I'm here with our captains, Abby Seer, Lauren Cessari, and we're here to ask for your permission to attend and play in a tournament in Florida next year. The tournament is held at Disney's Wild World of Sports, and it's a tournament they've been running for over 20 years. We would play three games down there, we'd spend four nights, and the trip would include airfare, and hotel, and meals, and transportation to the games and practices, and from the airport. So it's about as all-inclusive as you could get. The estimated price, we don't have a specific price, 'cause we don't know exactly how much the flights will be, but the estimated price is about $1,600 per player, of which we plan to be working really hard to try to fundraise. But I think it's a great opportunity for our team, I think it's a great opportunity for these girls to represent the school, and we have a great group of players and individuals, and they would be fantastic ambassadors for Medfield High School. But I'm gonna let Abby and Lauren talk a little bit more about it, and what the opportunity means to them.
This trip would be an amazing opportunity for the team to bond as we travel together, as well as make memories that I'm sure will carry with us forever, like, when we come back, we'll still talk about it.
And because most of the people on our team are multiple sport athletes, most, like, all of our school, like, designated vacations are, like, taken up with sports, so we don't get like, time to go on vacation with not only our team, but with our family as well.
It would also be a great learning experience, teaching like, a financial lesson, and the responsibility of fundraising, it's always more rewarding to receive something that comes from hard work, and through fundraising, we would learn this lesson.
It would also be an opportunity to play against other teams from like, around the nation, and a great challenge and learning experience for the basketball team, because like, going into it, we wouldn't know how the other teams play, and it'd be good to like, adjust and learn how to play teams that we don't know.
Who are you guys, who are you, who's the competition?
So, we don't know exactly who we'd play, but it'd be teams from around the country. They, in applying to play in this tournament, they ask us our record, number of returning players, our success, and we try to match you up with comparable opponents, so we'd be playing some pretty good teams, probably, seeing that we've been relatively successful over the past few years, and we're returning a majority of our team, so.
Mark, is MIA okay with this? Is there any issues with that?
Uh, yeah, Eric, I've talked with Eric, and there's been other teams from Massachusetts that have gone down and played. Hopington has played in the volleyball tournament down there. Haverhill's played in the basketball tournament, St. Mary's Atlanta's played in the basketball tournament down there. So there's, there's several schools from the area that have been down and played in these tournaments the last few years.
I just wanna make sure, 'cause I remember a couple of years, or it was maybe it was last year, you had the opportunity to play at the Hall of Fame?
Right, that was, the reason why we couldn't play that game is our schedule was full.
Okay.
So it would've been an additional game, and they wouldn't allow that, yeah.
Mark, is there a day by which you have to let them know that you're committed?
It actually is, we're kinda pushing the limits here a little bit, we're a little bit behind. That being said, they've been pretty flexible, so, you know, I think they're excited to have us, if we can go. I'm sure that they would be, continue to be flexible.
I think, our, the only reason I ask is Jeff and I were chatting when you came up, I think our policy for a first time out of state trip is to hear from you at one meeting and vote it on another meeting, but if you're up a deadline against the deadline, we can take a vote to waive that policy for this trip, unless anybody has any concerns.
I can tell you, having known Lauren and Abby most all their life, in fact, most of the girls on that team for most of their life, we will be well represented.
No question about it.
Thank you. Just a little bit of history from my perspective, when I was a baseball coach here, I took a team to Cooperstown to play at Double Day Field in 2001, and I still see a lot of those players, and it's, it's really the one thing that they talk about, is most memorable athletic experience that they had. It was a great experience, it was an overnight trip, it was a chance to play on a field that, you know, that's got a lot of history, and I think this is a similar type opportunity for these girls, so.
I'll move to approve the trip.
I think we have to move to waive our policy for the trip first, just to dot our i's and cross our t's.
I'll move to do that.
Is there a second?
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous? Now you can make your motion.
I'll move to approve the trip to Florida for the varsity girls basketball team.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
We're sun-sweet.
No, Mark, the deal is that you have to make sure you're gonna stay in Medfield, though, because Mark has gotten a lot of national attention in the last couple of years with coaching, for USA Today, being voted top coach and everything, so we gotta make sure that this national exposure doesn't steal him away from Medfield. That's right. There you go. We have that on tape, Mark. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now you may go if you'll. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
And I, there, as I mentioned, there was a late addition to the agenda, I know there's some representatives from the Medfield Coalition from public education who wanna just come and speak briefly, so we're pleased to have you.
I just wanna start by saying thank you for inviting us to share what we've accomplished this school year. We've had a very successful school year, I think, due to our fundraising. We had our first ever student trivia challenge, which included Blake Middle School and the high school, and we raised over $1,700 that night, we had over 40 teams. Then we had our second year of our community trivia night, sold-out event again, and with 70 teams, and we raised over $12,500. And Spelling Bee was a bit different this year, we usually had, we had Blake involved, but this time we just had Wheelock and Dale, so the second graders got to come in, and which really livened it up, and they were thrilled beyond to get dressed up and do their thing. So it was a record year with 143 teams, and we raised over $6,000. Then we had our treasured experiences auction, which is basically the teachers, principals, Jeff, everyone donated experiences to have with the kids, and for that, we raised $12,000, which was incredible, over like, a weekend we did that, so that was great. And our biggest fundraiser of the year was the E for E's, which I'm sure everyone was tired of hearing us talk about all of the time, but we do wanna thank all of the community, the hosts that had parties. There were some pretty cool ones, they did a Forever in Blue Jeans party at the Legion, a pumpkin race, where people like, decorated these pumpkins, they went down this hill on Green Street and smashed them, a polar pool plunge, a hip-hop dance, gingerbread house decorating party, and several cocktail parties, which were fabulous. And with that, we raised over $21,000. We're continually doing our Blue Ribbon, which, you can write a note to a teacher and give a donation to the coalition. As of right now, we're up to about $6,000, but we get a lot of that right at the end of the school year's, last minute gifts and things like that. And amazingly, we raised over $21,000 with corporate sponsorship this year. We had a fantastic team, and we have four warrior sponsors who gave over $2,500, and that was Needham Bank, Rockland Trust, Hometown Weekly, and Subway.
So with all that money that we raised, we funded almost $70,000 in grants, across 18 grants across all five schools. The breakdown was for student programs and enrichment, that comprised about $13,000, or 19% of our total grants that we approved. Some of the highlights, we have a art presentation and mural creation that is gonna be done at Wheelock, it's gonna be a week-long project where the kids are gonna give input to create this mural, and the artist is gonna come in and put it on the wall, so the kids will be able to enjoy it for years to come. Memorial and Wheelock had an Emmy Award-winning food play theater show, which was to teach them about balancing physical activity and their food choices. The high school had Johnny Earl, or AKA Johnny Cupcakes, come and talk to the juniors and seniors, and his message was, "Follow your path and pursue your passion despite perceived obstacles," so that was well received. For Memorial, we funded 800 books for all the kindergarten classes, and then at the high school, we have two native French speakers that came over three consecutive Fridays to work with all of the French classes in grades nine through 12. For equipment, equipment grants comprised about, just over, almost $11,000, or 16% of the grants that we funded. We had 18 lap lizards and air cushions that we funded at Wheelock to help students regulate their energy and attention levels. Blake, we funded a creating and tinkering in the maker space, so it's, we funded materials so the kids could design and create, kind of in a collaborative environment, and I'm very excited about it, if you wanna ask him. And then also at Blake, we purchased a class set of African drums for the sixth grade general music class. Then for computer technology, that was almost $38,000 of the grants that we funded, or 54%. We purchased 10 quotable robots for the eighth grade science and technology classes. At Memorial, we funded 16 Apple TVs and the hardware. At Dale Street and at Wheelock, co-funded with the CSA, we purchased 25 iPads, covers, and carts for both of the schools, so 50 iPads in total. And then for Blake, we funded 28 Chromebooks, cart, Chromecast, and Google management software. And then finally, for professional development, that was $7,800, or about 11% of the grants that we funded. Seven educators from Blake went to a two-day conference on standard-based assessment and grading. At the high school, we partially funded attendance for the MHS advisors to present at the National Honor Society Conference. Five teachers from Dale Street went to the National Council of Teachers in Mathematics Conference. Four teachers went, from Blake, went to the EdTech Teachers iPad Summit in Boston. And we also funded a three-day conference for one educator on using social media and technology to enhance teaching in world languages. So we, we were fortunate enough to be able to fund almost all the grants that were brought before us, and I think one of the reasons that MCP was able to do that and raise so much money is because word really is getting out about MCEP, so that's thanks to the superintendent, thanks to the principals for spreading our message. And also, we, this, new this year, we have a online constant contact newsletter that everyone in the district should be receiving, so if you're not receiving it, you can go on our website and sign up for it. But, but we've had a great year, and we're really excited for the things that we were able to do for the, for the schools.
On behalf of the district, I can't thank you enough for the amount of work that you two do and the organization does, and you can really see how they fill the gaps in the budget. I mean, it's just incredible the work they've done. In my two years here, that they have been so impressive and helpful, and really, you know, we need something as a district, we know where to go, and along with the CSA, they've been just great, so I really appreciate all the hard work.
Happy to help.
And thanks for coming. I think it's nice that when people hear all that you do, 'cause I think people would never imagine all that the Coalition does, and all the work that goes into that. And you guys are kinda behind the scenes, a little bit stealth, and you've done such a great job with, you know, sending out the newsletters, tweeting, and keeping people updated, that you really deserve such accolades for all the hard work that you do.
Thank you.
And don't apologize for talking about the E for E, I mean, you know, the box shows up at the house. I never even see you, the box shows up, the box goes away.
We're very sneaky, we do it at night.
I get the receipt, and it's an excuse for me to have my favorite party of the year, and you know, you know, if that didn't happen, if it wasn't for E for E, that party might not happen, and it'd be, all of my neighborhood would be revolting, so.
Well, you can have it every year, even if we don't have E for E, so.
He does.
I do, yeah.
Do you? Oh, I'm sorry. Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I've lost track, but I think we promised Mr. Disorder he could be next, is that right?
We did.
Thank you. First of all, I wanna thank Superintendent Marsden for giving me the opportunity to speak before the school committee tonight on a topic that I think is very, very important. This is actually my third time before the school committee in the past 25 years on the topic of civic education. Twice before, I had urged a change in the high school graduation requirement, so that we could include at least a one semester required course in civic education, but I learned that when dealing with graduation requirements, nothing really comes easy, there's a lot of politics and change with the status quo. So I'm here this evening, again, on the topic of civic education, but this time with a different approach. Now, we might not be able to solve the problems that lack of civic education we're seeing nationwide, but I believe we can make a difference here in the town of Medfield. And what is the problem that I'm talking about? Well, first of all, when it comes to the type of government that the founding fathers had come up with, when asked, "What is the government we have?", Benjamin Franklin responded, "A republic, if you can keep it." And I think unless we take some action, I am less and less sure, as a country, we're gonna be able to keep that. And I wanna just read a little bit of an editorial you might've seen that was in the, in the Boston Globe, and it says, "With rolful regularity, researchers confirmed Americans' dismal knowledge in civics. In a nationwide poll of millennials, in January, 77% of Americans between the ages of 18 and 34 could not name even one of their US senators. It's an old story reinforced by years by scholarly studies, popular news accounts, and even men-on-the-street interviews. Americans don't know much about the workings of their government, or about the basics of its constitutional architecture. The lack of knowledge is not just disturbing in itself, it also possesses a threat to the vitality of democratic self-rule. Immigrants seeking to become US citizens are required to meet a minimal standard of knowledge about civics and government as a condition to be naturalized. From a pool of 100 questions, would-be citizens are tested on 10, and must correctly answer a majority. Some of these questions, such as, how many amendments does the Constitution have, what are two rights, the Declaration of Independence, who is the commander-in-chief of the military, the questions are not especially demanding, and more than 95% of the immigrant applicants applying for citizens pass the citizenship test. Yet, 1 in 3 native-born Americans would fail that same challenge. That contrast has spurred a nationwide effort, the Civic Education Initiative, to ensure that every American high school graduate passes the US citizenship test as a condition for getting diploma, was recently passed in January by Arizona, and also picked up by North Dakota, South Dakota, and Utah, have since followed suit. Of course, this initiative won't fix everything that ails all civic education in America, but making sure that high school students know at least as much about the fundamentals of US government and law as foreign-born citizens would be a step in the right direction. In a democratic republican, republic, civics knowledge matters at least as much as math and science. The Civic Education Initiative can only make things better, and every state should be on board. Because of MCAS and other testing, especially in the elementary and middle school levels, pressure is being put on teachers to teach the test, so they can produce high scores. In many states, and in many systems, teachers' jobs are actually on the line if their students don't do well. I've talked to many such teachers from a variety of different school systems, and when push comes to shove, they tell me that the social studies, the civics, the history curriculums are being pushed aside because they're not being tested on that. And an elementary teacher I know well in western Massachusetts told me, "I just don't have time to do the social studies component, I spend more time because of what is gonna be on the, on the state mandated test." It's possible, unless a student selects the AP government here, it's possible to go through all of Medfield, middle and high school, and not receive any civic education. At least the US history is picked up in their sophomore and junior years. But we are graduating students with little knowledge oftentimes of our republic, how it works, and what it was set up to do. Today, we see a growing lack of civic involvement, a lack of civic involvement in our government, fewer and fewer people voting, fewer and fewer people running for office. In Medfield, we struggle to get 250 people out of 8,000 to attend just three hours of a town meeting once a year. Fewer and fewer people volunteer to serve on the many committees that are necessary to run a, a community. In another, I'll just read a section, also in the Boston Globe, it said that, "These days, American schools are focused on two of the big-" days, American schools are focused on two of the big Cs, college and career readiness." Maybe many believe that we're neglecting the third, and that's citizenship. Today, only eight states require that civics be taught at all. In 2013, the National Assessment of Education Progress suspended the civics portion of its exam after reporting years of dismal student scores. Civics wasn't always so widely disregarded. Past education pioneers, from the settlement houses, the leaders of the late eighteen hundreds, to John Dewey in the twentieth century, believed that a main goal of school was to prepare the next generation to engage actively in democracy. If we want our citizens to become engaged citizens, if we want our students to become engaged citizens, we must teach them to do more than just answer multiple-choice questions. At the best, civic education is personal, it's timely, and empowering. The example they give is this Generation Citizen. It's a nonprofit that advocates for civic education and has partnered with schools to run innovative programs tied to local issues. The group encouraged, for example, ninth graders in Malden, who successfully lobbied their mayor to build the city's first teen center in 2012 in response to local crime and the lack of safe spaces for young people. After murder of a fellow student in San Francisco, eighth graders collaborated with the school board to craft an anti-violence resolution. They testified before the superintendent, and they helped get the resolution passed. At Democracy Prep Public Schools, which is a growing charter school network, civics is an integral curriculum component that starts in kindergarten. In sixth grade, students fan out into the community to run get-out-to-vote campaigns. By senior year, these same students embark on a year-long quote-unquote "change the world" project on a community issue they feel passionate about by collecting and doing research and proposing realistic solutions. If we are serious about preparing the next generation, we have a collective responsibility to empower all students with the skills to engage in civic life and the opportunity to make change. And here in Midfield, well, first, according to a National View survey, on the hundred-and-fifty anniversary, which just took place of the assassination of President Lincoln, fifty percent of the American public could not tell when the Civil War took place. One in five Americans could not identify John Wilkes Booth as Lincoln's assassin, and only eighteen percent knew what the Emancipation Proclamation was. At the college level, history and government is being eliminated or replaced. In another article that was also in the paper, which I thought just was interesting, a lot of colleges are eliminating the civic and history requirements. Today, not even one in five colleges requires students to take a single fundamental course in American history or government according to the What Will They Learn study. Here in Massachusetts, only two of the faulty colleges and universities in that study required that course. That was Westfield and Worcester State. At Michigan's Oakland University, American history can be swapped for the foundations of rock or dance in America. At the University of California at Berkeley, the history requirement can be replaced with Amsterdam and Berkeley in the sixties. At the University of Colorado, history can be replaced with America Through Baseball, horror films, and American culture. Here in Midfield, content specialist Kathleen Emerson recently gave her honors juniors the citizenship test, where American students nationally did so poorly in. The average score with the Midfield students on the test she gave was a seventy, which she said students did much better in the history and geography part, but according to Kathleen, they struggled with the constitutional principles and the function and role of government. It's been my concern that students are graduating out of high schools with minimum civic knowledge. The mission statement here at Midfield High School calls for civic education. As our seniors go off and become adult citizens, we want to make sure that they have an understanding of the process of government at the federal, state, and local level. Oftentimes, we see a patent of no voting taking place or participating, participation in the community, with no knowledge of how to take action or bring about change in government. If our students leave here without getting that knowledge of who represents them, how much knowledge do they have on what those representatives can or should be doing and what impact the representatives have or should have on their lives? What I envision is some sort of a K-12 curriculum on civic education. When I taught political science, I, I had a thing with my poli sci students with the block period. We set up, I actually called it the Midfield School of Government. And when the students met in the morning on that block period, they could kind of sleep in. And the result was, one day a month, we had our local, our state, and congressmen that actually came and taught a unit at night, and it was kind of switching the class times. And it was getting our, our local, our state, and federal political leaders involved into the system. And we could do things like on the elementary level of starting of how a bill becomes a law, of doing something very simple. You know, take something where the students have to do like, you know, an ice cream sundae bill, and they have to debate things like what type of toppings they get on. But they, they get the skills of compromise and learning how that process works. Or having a mock town meeting at the middle school level, middle school kids love to debate, take issues that are student-centered, that they could do some research on. Or field trips, as we get into the, into the senior level. I, I just actually started working this new Edward M. Kennedy Institute for the United States Senate, and they got a total replica of the United States Senate in the middle. And they run this SIMS program, which is kind of like a Harvard model Congress. It's a two-and-a-half-hour program, and they, high school kids come in, and they break them up into committees, and they have to debate, and they have to research, and there's like actors that role-play, different people at hearings, and the students have to come back, and you're in literally the United States Senate. Those type of things, I just think are good for kids, and it gets them thinking about their government. I don't have all the ideas. I, I think a curriculum, in my mind, would be developed by the teachers and the administration who know the students best, but there are a lot of ideas out there to help. I raised this issue because I see students receiving less and less knowledge of our country and its government, and less and less people getting involved in the government, and less and less people voting. I used to tell my students, "Democracy is not a spectator sport." And again, as Benjamin Franklin said, you know, "We have a republic if we can keep it." I hope we can heap it, keep it, and I hope Midfield would at least begin to take a look at what I see is, is a problem with this, and begin to explore, what can we do to better increase civic knowledge of our students so that when we graduate them and we send them out into the world, that they're going to go into whatever communities that they live, you know, they're going to be active citizens, and they're going to be at the town meetings, and they're going to be voting, and, and get an understanding of the type of government we have. So that's the main reason I was here tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
What, so moving it into the K-12 curriculum, you mean, working, so working within the existing kind of structure, but find a way to get civic education in it? Or what's like specifically, how would you envision? Because you've been in the schools for years, I mean, you know.
I, I would envision something that went K-12. And I, I think every community is different, so I think you would have to have the individual teachers, the principals, get involved, because they clearly know what's best at their level. But I would see something that hopefully began very basic, even on kindergarten, first, second grades, and then would continue to lead as we get up into middle school, become a little more advanced as you go along. I'm not, I'm not trying to present a certain type of program or anything. I'm just very concerned, I think, because of the lack of civic education that we're not getting in throughout our country. I mean, I read some of these things of the statistics of what people don't know, and it's, it's just frightening. I, I think we're in a much higher end, I think, a lot of times here in Midfield, but it's scary what, what students don't know about civic education. What bothers me is when they leave here, if they're not into patents of voting and participating, they're not going to suddenly pick it up. Here's where they need to pick it up. And then, as they leave, hopefully, that's going to stay with them. So there's all kinds of programs that are out there. I, I don't have one that I know is an all-star. I, I think every community, Midfield, would have to look and see, you know, what's best for Midfield. But I think something that started basic and built each year until you eventually graduated your students as active participants, and, and realizing that change can take place, and realize how to do that, and how our government works. And I just think, as a country, we're missing a lot of that.
Richard, what was the program that you and I were at, at the VFW? They sponsor our students to go to Stone Hill College. I can't think of the name of the program.
That's Boys State and Girls State.
Thank you. Boys State and Girls State. So we have a, we have probably the most, they were telling me, the most kids out of any high school around, we sent, I think, twenty-one this past year. And the kids were raving about it. I mean, they love that program.
They thrive on that.
They really do.
And, and to run, I, I just think, you know, mock town meetings, and, and I know, from a teacher's point of view, it's nice because everybody keeps adding all these things we have to have, you know, in our school system, and all are very worthy, and there's only so many hours in a day that can take place. But I just wanted to raise that, you know, I think because it's not on the testing and the state level, it gets pushed aside. And I've talked to a lot of, not necessarily here in Midfield, but a lot of elementary and middle school teachers who tell me, they're not teaching it because they're focusing on what's going to be on that test. And right now, because of a variety of politics and stuff, history, government, civics is not on a lot of these tests. And so it's not getting, what I believe, the attention that it should be getting.
Richard, I, I want to thank you. You know, when I ran for school committee, I, one of the first things I did was go to Richard's classroom, because I knew his students had, were required to vote, he was going to make sure they voted. So there were eighteen students who were going to vote. So I started out with at least eighteen votes, and I appreciate you're getting me here today. Well, sometimes I appreciate it. And so I, you know, I think you, you know, you have, you did a great job putting a real structure in place, at least at the high school. Has there been any effort in Massachusetts to adopt this, I think you call the Civic Education Initiative?
Again, I think there's, there's some politics, because what should be in, what shouldn't be in, a lot of times, you've got conservative, Democrat, go to battle.
Yeah, I mean, the, the history or social studies frameworks went through, what, twelve amendments, and they never did get passed, right?
Right. I mean, they've been talking about that for, for years and years and years.
And is there?
As soon as they come up with something, there's one group or another that has an issue of what's in it or what's not in it. So I, I don't know. I, I get a little discouraged sometimes looking at the state level of what is not being done. And sometimes I think, you know, we're very good as a community to come together, and, and I think if we had something of, of a speakers program, we had, you know, local officials, you know, our state reps, a real good Congressman Kennedy, others, you know, to work them into the system, age-appropriate levels, you know, kind of a village, raise, you know, the, work with the school committee type of an idea of everybody working together on the issue of civic education, I think could be done. And it's just being kind of creative, and what can we do, you know, to try to help that, that effort.
Or maybe formalize some stuff, because I think in, for example, in Memorial, don't they do the Big Six Project?
Mm-hmm.
Where they take the White House, and everybody's, every child does their own little research, and I think that's brilliant, you know? So I think there might be bits of it.
Yep.
Out there.
Even though, I mean, the DC trip, leaving at six o'clock tomorrow morning, they all, you know, all the kids had to put together a presentation on a monument.
Formalized, I love it. Thank you.
And Grade Three focuses on the state of Massachusetts.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, so all that particular piece, too. But I think it's just, again, playing the time, as Richard said, it becomes difficult sometimes.
But it exists, but if we, some of it does, if we could formalize it somehow and expand and...
More to, to focus so that...
We should know the basics, though, when they leave.
No question.
Very basics.
It wouldn't seem to take that much, like, work to do that, get to know the basics, at least.
So basically, I just want to raise the issue. I, I don't have a plan.
Yeah.
You guys know what you're doing, and the teachers and the, and the principals do as well. But I just wanted to raise that issue. I, I just get concerned that not enough emphasis is, is put on that. And so I just wanted to put that back on the front burner with you.
We appreciate it. Why, can I ask one unrelated question while you're here? Because I, I never, people know I'm on the school committee, I'm not a selectman, so they don't, they don't generally bring me selectman's questions. But the one I keep getting is about the availability of the Center of Midfield for Midfield groups. And I know last year, there was a policy change that, have you heard about this issue? Is that, I know, like, the MCP, for example, wanted to use it last year for the trivia contests and didn't. I don't want to put you on the spot, but, so you don't have to answer me, but I know that's, and because of our constituency, it's an important issue for us, and I know, you know, as part of the civic discussion.
It came up with us, and it was raised, and Town Council is working with the, with the Council of Aging. They have come up with, with a new policy on that. It, it's a town building.
Right.
And, but on the other hand, they're looking at costs to, you know, to maintain that for lights and custodial fees and things like that. So that's the issue of the Council of Aging, but they did come up with a new policy with that. And I know there was some controversy, because some from the outside wanted to use that facility, and I, I believe they were denied by the Council of Aging to use that. So there's a little turf issue, I think, sometimes, that they're trying to make sure that there's supervision, you know, that's there, and, and they try to limit a certain number of, of activities a month that are there, but they do have an open calendar. And if somebody is interested, they would have to, you know, contact Roberta Lynch and, and see what the availability is up there.
Sure, I could certainly understand not having it available for, you know, a private party, Sweet Sixteen Party. But for Midfield groups, and we, you know, we have our own policies about renting out our own facilities for those, and we, you know, make sure that custodians are paid for, lights are paid for. You know, when we all voted to build that, that was, you know, the public availability of it was a big, when you talk about civic engagement, that was part of the civic debate, was availability of that. So I appreciate that you're following up on it.
But I would, I would contact them. They do have a new policy that they just approved and worked with Maxxaral on that.
Great.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Richard.
Next item on New Business is the Strategic Plan Subcommittee.
Oh, hey, it's full day kindergarten, okay.
Oh, it's full day kindergarten, it is, I crossed it up. I'm sorry, I missed it. I'm sorry. You want to go home to your family? I'm just going to keep you down there.
Good evening. Thank you so much for inviting me here this evening. I'm thrilled to give you an update on full-day kindergarten as we approach the end of our first year of implementation. And I'm even more excited to report that it's been a very successful transition, and we've had a great year so far. Currently, our enrollment for kindergarten for the fifteen, fourteen, fifteen school year is a hundred and fifty-one students. Out of that, a hundred and twenty of those children are enrolled in six full-day kindergarten classrooms. This year, the kindergarten teachers have worked very hard to structure their schedules to maximize this extended period of time. And I'm hoping to just, I picked a handful of things to highlight for you tonight, although there are many wonderful things that are happening in full-day kindergarten. So the first one, guided reading. Over the past several years, Jamie Callahan, our reading specialist, has been working very hard with all grades, but also with the kindergarten team, to implement best practices and talk about guided reading. Using a balanced literacy approach, she's done guided reading lesson, guided reading, oh my goodness, guided reading instruction, word study, and phonemic awareness, and that we're finding with the full-day kindergarten, the kids are having a great time and making tremendous progress with this. One of the things that the kindergarten team did actually this year, focus on setting a very rigorous goal of trying to bring a hundred percent of the kindergarten students' three reading levels from November to June. So a very high bar that we set. As of March, two-thirds of our kindergarten kids have already made this benchmark, and we've had, we have had two months more of instruction since then, and we are preparing to assess again. And we're expecting that we'll have a lot, a greater percentage of kids that will meet that benchmark as well. It's the additional time in full-day kindergarten. The additional time in full-day kindergarten is definitely a lot beneficial for this because the kids are really able to spend time, the teachers are able to work with them in groups and really focus in on what their specific needs are. In fact, we were able to start guided reading instruction and DRA assessments two months earlier this year than we have been able to in the past. So, we've really been able to make some great progress that way. One of the things that was mentioned actually in the previous presentation about MCP is one of the great problems that we discovered is that we ran out of books because of how voracious our readers were in kindergarten. So, MCP funded a $4,000 grant to bring more books and level readers so that the kids could take these books home each night to read. So, that was fantastic. Another program that you may have heard about that we implemented in kindergarten is Foundations. And Foundations is a phonemic awareness program that focuses for, it's the general population, but also at-risk students. And although we are only one year in, we have noticed phenomenal growth in our students, particularly in the understandings of letters and sounds, the ability to code and their handwriting skills. Our reading specialists in particular have mentioned the difference in the students' abilities, especially with letter sound ID and the decreased number of referrals that we've had as a result of being that. And I know it's early on to make any sweeping statements, but we're really excited about that. So excited that we're planning to adopt the program in first grade next year so that we can continue with the great growth that the kindergarten students have made. And I'm in particularly excited to hear what the first-grade teachers have to say next year when the kindergarten kids come in and to see, you know, that difference of where they were this year in September and where they'll be next year in September. We have also, in kindergarten, started the Lucy Cockens Unit of Study Writing Units. And this year, the kindergarten team were just asked to implement one as part of the pilot. Next year, they'll be doing all four units. So, the majority of the kindergarten teachers focused on launching the Writers Workshop. And the output and the love of learning that we've seen in our students is simply amazing. The kids are writing stories, they're sharing them with their friends, they're sharing them with anyone who will come in the room. They're so excited about that and to see them reading and writing and learning from one another, when a lot of times, writing can be such a struggle for a lot of kids. It's a great thing to see. And the additional time in the schedule for full-day kindergarten has really allowed that peer feedback, the teacher feedback, that sometimes didn't make it into instruction in the past. Just a few pictures of some of the kids sharing their writing. It's been really, really wonderful. And as you can see from their faces, they're so proud and so excited to share what they've done. And I think that a lot of the teachers are planning their end-of-the-year kindergarten celebrations with a focus around writing. I know there's going to be an author's tea in one of the kindergarten classrooms so that the kids can share the stories that they've written through the year. So, it's been a really exciting thing to see. And I don't want to forget math. So, in this year, the teachers have continued their exploration of the Math Common Core curriculum standards. And they've worked diligently with our math consultant to continue to familiarize themselves with the standards and implement best practices into their daily instruction. One of these, one of the strategies that they've also done is guided math groups, which allow, very similar to guided reading groups, them to focus in on small groups of students that are able to, and target their instruction based on what those, you know, four or five kids in the group need. It's a great way to get to know what our kids are learning and to see what kind of instruction we need to differentiate to better meet their needs. And the full-day kindergarten students have benefited, I think, from this extra time to practice and really hone their skills. And the teachers are noting great growth in their students' math skills as well. We can't forget recess. Because having a full day of kindergarten has also allowed the kids to have daily lunch and recess opportunities, at least when it wasn't snowing outside. And...
So, both days.
And so, you know, able to develop their social skills, meet new friends. You know, before in half-day, they only had access to, you know, a very small population. And now, they're able to get together with the whole grade of students and really hone those social skills. I asked the teachers for some feedback on what they were seeing. So, they came up with these four, these four things that I think encapsulate what they're seeing as part of full-day kindergarten. Students have more time to explore and learn at their own pace. Teachers are able to allocate more time to implementing response-to-intervention practices. So, they're really able to know their students, see what they need for interventions and intervene, whether it's on the low end or the high end, and really bring their students forward. As a result of having additional time to practice, more students, they're seeing that more students have stronger foundational skills in math, reading, writing, across the board. And finally, they're thinking that an increase, and we'll have to continue to watch this, but they're thinking that an increased number of students appear to be better prepared for the first-grade day. So, when the kids would transition from half-day to a full day of first grade where the expectations are high, the day is longer, it was a big jump for them. And we're anticipating that that transition might be a little bit easier in the fall for several students. So, next year, as of right now, we have a total enrollment for kindergarten of, it's actually 159. We had one more student enroll this afternoon after I had done the presentation. And full-day kindergarten enrollment is at 147, which is up 27 students from what we have this year. So, we will be adding an additional full-day kindergarten class for next year. And I just can't thank you enough for supporting the implementation of full-day kindergarten in Medfield. We've seen great progress this year and I know the teachers are excited. The students are doing very, very well. And I've got some great parent feedback as well. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Yeah, I've got one, Ms. E. So, are there any first-grade curriculum implications for next year, considering these kids are already taking home books and, because, you know, I go in there now for my first-grader and they're picking out books. And I thought, my gosh, I think the kindergartners are probably taking home similar...
Yes, yeah. So, particularly in reading, we're anticipating that we're going to need to adjust our benchmarks for reading because the kindergarten kids will be coming in at a higher reading level than they have in the past for the majority of them. So, the end of first-grade benchmark will be raised in the same way that the end of kindergarten benchmark has been raised this year.
Okay.
So, and then, we'll have to, we'll have to kind of look at other implications across other curriculum areas going forward, but that's probably the one that jumps out at me as the most obvious reading.
Yeah, and I also think the writing as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, so...
Yeah. You know, I think our expectations have been raised.
Yeah.
And, you know, the kids have risen to the challenge. And what we're seeing from before, where we might have expected, you know, a complete sentence at the end of kindergarten, we're now getting stories from the kindergarten students. So, I think that it's, what's fortunate is that we're using Lucy Cockens all the way up through the elementary. So, it counts for those differences, but I think we'll be able to, now that the kindergarten is part of that program, really be able to move forward quickly with them.
And I also think, what is the mood of the teachers? Because I remember, you know, volunteering in those classes last year, 10 minutes, change, snack time, you're over there. And it's, I think, breathe, time to breathe. And in a minute time, you know, we're on. So, I'm sensing, you know, that, that wasn't one of the benefits listed, but I'm guessing or in assuming, I'm hoping that the teachers feel, you know, moments of breath.
Absolutely. I think, I think that, you know, you think you're going to have a lot of time. And when you actually get into the full day, it gets filled up very quickly. But I think that they feel that they can, as you said, breathe a little bit and really respond to the kids' needs at the time without having to rush through their day. So, it's, I think it's been a benefit for all. I think after we get through this first year and they've kind of done everything in a full-day style for the first year, I would expect to see even more breathing, if you will, going forward.
For everyone, because I think students respond to teachers and how they respond to, you know?
Absolutely.
So, I think this is a positive...
I would agree. You know, we have some time to do some of the social thinking curriculum, which encourages, you know, being mindful of how you're feeling and being able to breathe and working in yoga breathing and different exciting things that we might not have had the opportunity to do in the past.
Super.
What is the student-teacher ratio in the full-day kindergarten?
So, we have, so right now, it's 20 to 2. So, there's a full-day aide and a full-time aide and a kindergarten teacher in each classroom, as well as other support staff that comes in throughout the day. And next year, probably 21 to 2 is what we're looking at right now.
No, I think it's unbelievable. We're working in Hopkinton, they're doing a new early elementary school, and they've implemented full-day kindergarten this year. Their advances mirror what you're talking about. I'm sure it's only a matter of time before it's pretty, maybe it's already going everywhere now.
I think it's, I think it's a lot of different...
It's unbelievable how much impact it has, getting the start for kids starting schools.
Absolutely.
I've talked to some parents in the community that originally kind of struggled with the idea of sending their child, because I think it was harder for them to let go of their child than actually the child leaving the parent. And already, they have said, it is such a good decision that they can't believe now that they ever questioned whether it was a good idea. So, so many people have been so happy with this full-day kindergarten.
Glad to hear that. That's great, thank you.
Ms. E., I didn't write down the number. How many do you have, how many kindergartners do you have in the current school?
Current, 100, in full-day?
No, just altogether kindergarten.
151 this year.
151, so you're up to 159 for next year?
Yes.
At what point do we start to run out of classrooms? You asked, because down in Superintendent's report, we're going to talk about the park at Medfield.
Sure.
And that's not the only issue we have in terms of growth. And, you know, I think if you look at the ways the homes are turning over in town, I've been saying for years, we're coming, you know, we've been losing students and that's going to turn around. And so, I really wonder if that's going to put you in a difficult position in terms of space over there.
For next year, we're okay. We had one empty classroom that we used for professional development throughout this year. So, that will be the extra full-day kindergarten classroom. So, for next year, we're in good shape. And I think we still have a little bit of wiggle room with some of our, we could make some, some moves and shift some specialists who maybe are not homeroom teacher or classroom teachers. But we are, in terms of classroom space...
So, if you've got 10 more kids next year, you'd be okay?
Yes, yeah. Right now, we have one half-day kindergarten classroom, morning session only. So, we still have the opportunity to expand to a PM if we have any flexible students.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Great job, thanks.
Next, now, I think our next item on the agenda, although I'm realizing I skipped minutes, we'll come back to that. It's not my night. We've been talking for a while about a strategic plan and we need to formalize a subcommittee for that. And so, I know Tim, I talked to Tim about doing the initial work on that subcommittee. Do you think, do you need more than one member for now? Thank you very much, Ms. E.
I mean, certainly, you can have one more.
Sure. If we have two members and then...
I'd love to do it.
Okay. I know it, it's a process, it seems the only one on the committee who's been through it, so that's why I think it's really important to have him on there, but it'd be great to have him on too. Good, so, that'll fill up your summers.
Although, I don't remember.
What's that?
I think I literally was getting on the committee when we finished it last time.
Yeah, you're probably right.
I'll do my best, though.
I have no doubt. Thank you.
Well, that just involves the two of you in superintendent for now, so you can kind of schedule meetings when you're available.
So, we'll be, we'll work with Jeff on that.
Meet at Tim's house for breakfast.
Yeah.
Next item on the agenda is school committee meeting dates for 2015 to 2016.
Mr. Chair, I put a calendar together similar to what we had last year, excuse me, this year. The one change is on September 21st, there is a workshop scheduled with John Doria and he would be doing some evaluation. As you know, we've done evaluation training this year with principals, content specialists, et cetera, and we want to extend that to school committee and me as well, so...
Okay. So, will there be business on the agenda at September 21st?
No, no. It'll just be a workshop.
And do you think, do we need another business meeting in that timeframe then? Or do we just want to hang loose and see if one comes up? See if we need, if any rises?
Maybe we need one beforehand, because we have one the 28th of right next week.
Okay.
So, if you wanted to have one between the 24th and the 28th, we could do that. It's up to you.
If, sorry, why don't we just hang loose and then, on the 24th, you can let us know if we need to schedule one?
Okay, we'll do that.
So, one of the part of thing is, as we talked about when we did the superintendent's evaluation this year, the state is mandating that superintendents be evaluated now prospectively the same way teachers and, teachers started being evaluated two years ago and other administrators started being evaluated this year. It's a two-year rollout. It will change the whole, the way we do all the evaluations. So, it's important that if you can be there to do that, so. Otherwise, we don't vote on the calendar, right? On this calendar?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Actually, I think, I think you did last year. I think you did last year. I think you did.
Then, well, then, is there a motion to approve the school committee date calendar?
You did last year.
For a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, but unanimous. We voted anyway.
Perfect.
There you go.
Just be safe.
Mr. Chair, the next item is the school calendar adjustment for next year. What I'm asking is a change from having the release day in May on the 6th, moving that to the 13th. And that's because the SAT is scheduled for the 7th, and we need to work around that. They've actually, the high schools actually changed prompt to the 14th. It was originally going, excuse me, changed prompt to the 13th. It was originally going to be the 6th.
Okay.
So, we'd like to just move that release day to the 13th instead of having it on May 6th.
Is there another prospective change in the works if the contract is approved?
I think we put that in for the, I think we have to look at it for the next year.
Okay.
In terms of our planning and everything, we want to get that...
Just too much to accomplish.
It is, yeah. Because we have that professional development committee is going to be getting it together as a result of the contract, so it would be for the following year, for '16, '17.
Any questions on the calendar?
No.
Is there a motion to approve?
No move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
So, we'll post this up.
So, Jeff, will you email this or is this not?
We can email it out to parents and we'll post it on the website as well.
We actually, we approve the calendar of, other than that change in February, I think, right?
February 3rd, yeah.
Yeah, so, it's just updating it.
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, the last item on the new business is certification legal counsel from the town of Medfield. So, this was written by Mark Sorrell, the town's attorney. And this is, so, during the Wheelock Boiler Project, the town has given me authorization to sign off on anything that goes along with that with work orders, et cetera. Pretty standard, but Mark wanted to put this together so that the school committee voted on that. And then, I believe, is he going to certify that?
We'll certify tomorrow.
Tomorrow. He said he wants to certify it so that it's on the record. So, I would just ask if you'd take a peek at this and then, you know, let me know your thoughts.
So, this is to give, this is to give you the authority to sign off on our behalf?
Correct.
Okay.
During the project.
During the project. And is the building committee also signing off?
This is a pretty typical, this is the boiler project, which is not under the building committee.
I see.
And it's a pretty typical, what Superintendent's asking for.
So is there any questions? And is there a motion approved?
If I move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Let's get the boilers in. Okay, let's go back up now to minutes, which I think NMA has this time. Is that right?
Yes, yes. I have a couple of amendments under the grade six science standard base pilot.
You have to pick the date first.
Oh, sorry.
You're on the April sixth minute, right?
No. Yes, sorry. April sixth minute.
Okay.
Alrighty. So, under the grade six science standard base, Nat's presentation. I just want to note, which I thought was an important piece of it, was how it really impacts the teacher's workload. How it takes, uses, takes a lot of time to write these things up. And that just wasn't noted, so.
Okay.
And the next bit on the following page, under FY sixteen budget discussion. Chris Morrison, you brought up, what is it? The firewall. So we're, that was one of the budget cuts proposed.
From the capital budget.
Correct. And then you had posed the question, could that be part of the capital budget? What? Correct? Because it's part of the line item in the operational budget.
Right, it was an operational budget and I asked whether it could be a capital item.
Correct. I just thought that would be relevant to note.
Okay.
So with the amended, proposed. Do you do this? Do I do this?
So you, you need to move the minutes as amended.
I would like to move the minutes as amended, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Thank you.
Unanimous. See, I, see, I paid attention when I went to Richard's class that day. We also, I think, need to approve the executive session minutes for the sixth and the twenty-seventh. Just.
Summate.
Yeah, there you go.
There we go.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous.
Great.
Sorry for the confusion. Dr. Morrison?
Old business, we have donation approvals I'd like to share with you this evening. First one is ninety-three dollars, sixty cents from CSA of Medfield for Wheelock School to purchase author's notebooks. A one hundred dollars from CSA of Medfield for Wheelock School for playground equipment. One thousand four hundred fifty-three dollars, seventeen cents from Life Touch as a commission check. And a three thousand dollar anonymous donation. I know who the parent is, but she wants to remain anonymous to Blake Middle School for Technology.
Great.
Because it's actually a component of the maker space that Nat is doing.
Oh, alright.
I'll have him make sure that he presents that to you folks as he's going through the process.
The new spaces.
Great idea. Very excited about it. And MCP has been very supportive of that as well.
Thank you very much.
So those are the donations, Mr. Chair.
Is there a motion to approve the donations?
Summate.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. With our thanks. Thank you very much.
Thanks to everyone. Mr. Chair, my report to the committee, I have several items. First is the FY sixteen budget update. Again, I want to thank the community and citizens of Medfield for their support at town meeting. For not only our operating budget, but also our capital budget. Both were supported and we really appreciate that. Also, the support of the, the community for the Wheelock Boiler Project, which is a separate item on the, on the, on the warrant for five hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars, in which the town will receive between one hundred and eighty-seven and one hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars in return in reimbursement for that. And the good part about the new process is they'll get reimbursements right away. It's not going to be at the end of it. So as we do reimbursable bills, the town will get that sent back into the general fund, which Mike has assured me goes into the town's general fund. So he made that very clear. So, you know, really thankful of the, of the work that the town did and appreciate the work that the warrant committee did with us this year. And I appreciate the words of Mr. Markucci in the opening, you know, thanking us for the, the collaboration for the, for the budget process this year. So I appreciate that.
I think the hallmark of a successful budget process is when you have the warrant committee all in favor. And you, and nobody mentions, the school committee budget doesn't come up. There were no questions, no holds. I think people knew what was in there and understood it. Ironically, the only question, and we're always thrilled to have these, was somebody asking to put some money back into our budget.
Correct.
Which we'd have loved to have taken, but partly because of the way we've been working with the warrant committee. We didn't really want to stand up and do that. And I think there's also a couple other steps that need to happen, as Dr. Morrison alluded to at, at town meeting, so.
So we're also working on schedules at middle school and high school. As you remember, the last meeting we had, we outlined some of the potential reductions, excuse me, in, in staffing. So we're still going through the schedule to hope to have that finalized by the middle of June. But it looks like the recommended point four in family consumer science is going to be more like a point two because of the number of kids that it impacted. And a reduction in point two in social studies did not impact as many kids. So that's what we're working on with the high school staff right now. So the same money amount, but, but certainly not impacting as many kids. So I'll give you an update on that at our next meeting. We'll give you a final, final tally of what that looks like. But again, I, I just thought it was a very good process this year. Certainly having Michael on board helped out a lot during that process. And, and he did a lot of work revamping a lot of what was done. So I appreciate the work that, that Michael did this year as well. It was great. Terms of the K-5 math program, so we've had a committee for the last couple of years looking at math programs. And they've been working not only as a group, but working closely with Kim Cave and also the consultant that's been working with them in terms of professional development. So at our meeting, I think it was the beginning of this month, we had three different programs, of which they spent the last five or six weeks looking at. Their colleagues looked at it as well. We had some teachers go to the NCTM, National Council for Teaching Mathematics Conference. And they looked at the programs in depth there. And they came back very excited about Envision two point oh from Pearson. So we got some of the data from other districts. Envision is, is a program that's used in many, many communities in the area. Two point oh is their latest version of it. It's not even completely printed yet. But it, it has many upgrades and our teachers are very, very excited about that. So they're going to do a presentation for you at our next meeting. And then whenever a district has to adopt, fully adopt a textbook like this, not a program, but a full textbook adoption, it needs school committee approval. So I would ask that after the presentation at our next meeting, that you folks vote to support that. They're pretty excited about it. What we're doing right now is working with the vendor to try to get some costs down and get some figures. But we're, we're very excited about it. The teachers have been doing a lot of creating a curriculum for the last few years. And, and they feel like this, you know, really makes the consistency across the board for, for mathematics. And, and it provides them with the tools that they can differentiate. It gives them assessments they can use. Instead of doing all this time creating all that, it's already there for them. And of course, with any implementation, there are pitfalls. But I think that the fact that they're excited about it, that our consultant's going to work eleven days in each elementary building, helping the teachers with the implementation next year. And there'll be some, some professional development right before school starts as well. And then over the summer, we have two teachers from each grade level, Kim Cave and our math consultant, working to, to kind of map out what the year's going to look like with the new program. So people are excited about it. I think they made a great choice. There was three really good programs out there. But they were so excited about this one that they, they refused it with their excitement. So we're looking forward to that. And, and happy for our kids because we'll get consistent instruction across the board in all three buildings. So.
Awesome.
You know, more to come with that. You'll have a full presentation and certainly have a chance to ask any questions of Kim and the committee. But they, they did a great job. I can't be happier with the work they did.
I think the key element was that the eleven professional days at each school. I think that is great.
If you talk to other places, there, there's been implementations in surrounding towns of similar programs where it's, teachers get the book on the first day and it's kind of a good luck. But we really feel like we're committed about having them getting the information. So they have it over the summer, have that group map it out. And then have the consultant work with them. Because it's difficult. It's difficult to implement a new program like that, so. And they feel comfortable. They've worked with this consultant the last couple of years. So they feel very comfortable with her and certainly are excited about the program.
So nice to get that consistency across the grades too.
Any questions? I mean, you're going to have probably questions at the next meeting when they do the presentation, but I just wanted to give you an overview of what they were. Mr. Chair, the next item, Dale Street principal update. As you know, we've hired Stephen Grunam as our new principal of Dale Street. And that came after our, our search that lasted a little bit longer than we all hoped it would. It seemed to go on and on. April vacation was kind of a problem in there. It kind of, we lost our momentum a little bit there. But certainly Steve brings a wealth of experience and knowledge. He's been a principal for the last nine years and has been a successful principal for nine years. And I think that's, that's the important piece, that we needed to have someone at Dale Street that has done the work and done it real well. And he was able to, like the other finalist candidate, was able to meet with the Dale Street staff and have a, have a time where they spend an hour and a half or so walking through the school, meeting the kids, meeting the teachers. And then hold this impromptu staff meeting at the end where they did a Q and A with teachers. And I think that went very well for, for both candidates, actually. But certainly the fact that we have someone with, with his experience is going to be a great asset to our community. So we're really pleased about that. Steve would, he could come to a meeting in June or certainly could come in August, whatever you folks would like. Just let me know and I'll, I'll make sure that, that he does, he shows up for our meeting. And I want to thank NMA and Mary Ann for being on that committee. I know that it was a lot of time, a lot of effort. Certainly the site visits during the day and meetings at night. It was a lot. So I appreciate your, your help and support on that.
One question, Jeff. Someone brought it up at the, at the superintendent advisory committee meeting in terms of Dale Street has been in a state of flux for so long.
Right.
You know, this is, this is going to work. And, and there are steps that are going to be implemented that are going to mentor him. So I think that would be important.
So one of the, one of the things that I think is important, you know, when someone comes into a new, a new district is not necessarily being mentored for their position, but being mentored for their position in the community. And, and Nat is going to be taking on mentoring Steve, which I think is great. You know, Nat is, does an incredible job with building culture and building school culture. And Steve does that well as himself. But I think, you know, certainly with an interim and then in a couple of difficult years, et cetera, another interim. That certainly, that, that's a big piece of, of what Dale Street is looking for, is, is that strong leadership, but also, you know, building that culture. They, they work really well together. It's a good group of people over there. But they've had a tough few years. So I think the plan of having Nat mentor Steve is, is, is going to work really well. Thanks for reminding me of that. Mr. Chair, members of committee, the Dale Street parking lot. I have pictures from today.
I dropped either of them.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's moving, moving quickly. So if you've been by Dale Street in the last week or so, you've seen that there's a safety fence around the perimeter. And that is the only area that they are doing any of the work, is inside that safety fence. They're actually, we actually, when we met with them, Michael, the police chief, Kim Cave and I, we had them move the fence a little bit farther away from the building because we wanted to make sure that there was a digress there for kids. And they also, you can't really tell from the perspective of these pictures, but there's space between the fence in the woods back there that the FAF Center is using. And that's going to be a permanent path that they, they're putting back there. But it does look like a lot of space, but there's, there's probably about ten feet over there. So what they've done is install the fence. They took down two trees last week. Chief Meany and I were there for, for that. They made quick work of that last, I think last Thursday evening, I believe. And then they've, they've started wholeheartedly just removing the soil and grading the area. All in anticipation of being done by the third week of August. We've had everybody Cory checked, all the workers Cory checked, all that. They understand that they can't work between the hours of dismissal and arrival. So that, that's all pretty clear to them. They were great. They didn't work at all during MCAS. Which really slowed down their whole process. I mean, they really couldn't work at all during, during any of our testing. So they started actually cutting the trees down at three thirty instead of doing it during the day as they normally would. So we've been kind of difficult with them a little bit on that and really holding our line. But it's important that, you know, they work around our schedule as a school district and as a school. So I don't know, Tim, if you have anything that you want to add as on the committee, but.
I don't think they were, because this was a police fire and this was not really, you know, it's not a school project per se. I'm not even sure they were required to work around that schedule. I think they may have done that. They, they may have done that on their own. So that's.
Right. And they've been, the, the, the project manager's been great to work with.
Yeah, they have.
They've been really, really, they had someone on site all the time and they've been great. And then Shane has, Shane and I have been talking on the phone, you know, almost every other day. And he's getting updates. We sent the MCAS schedule to him. So he's coordinating all of that. So it's, it's gone really well so far.
I mean, Jeff, maybe you could just speak to the timing of putting up the fence, you know, because I know there was some questions that we received about, you know, why did we just find out that the fence was going up?
Oh, right, right. Yeah, so one of the things that, I think I got the text on, I don't know, Wednesday night or a Thursday night. And then went to the meeting the next day. And then they told us it was going to start that next week at the building committee meeting. So we were anticipating a little bit longer start, a later start, I guess, in June. But it was pretty quick. I mean, they, they moved it up quickly. So we got it out. We found out on Thursday and got that message out to parents through email and sent them a picture of the site plan. We couldn't do it right away to parents because we had to meet with the company. So Kim and I and Bob Meany met with the company and got all the logistics done. And then we sent that, sent that out on Monday. So it was starting, I think, that Wednesday or Thursday. But we sent the site map out as well. So it's, sometimes it's not the exact timing you'd like, but I think we got it out a few days ahead of time so that the parents could know about it. Our next item is Park at Medfield Development. In your packet, you have the materials that they gave me last week at their meeting. They came and, and visited me at town hall. And you talked a little bit about the project and, and what the, the time schedule is. Originally, we had thought it was going to be opening on August fifteenth. They told me last week it's September fifteenth they'll be opening. They're going to have a meeting tomorrow night, an open house type meeting, informational meeting for citizens. They, they have all the information there, but you can see that this, this really does have potential to really impact our student enrollment. You see a lot of multi-bedroom apartments there. So there is, there is potential of that. I go back to the assessment that was done a few years ago, and that said sixty to eighty students. So we'll have to see how it, how it all plays out. But sixty or eighty students spread over thirteen grades is fine. Sixty-eight students in one or two grades could be a problem.
Yeah.
So we'll have to see how it, you can never predict where they're, what grade the children are going to be in, but.
I'll predict right now they're all going to be elementary. It's going to be a majority elementary.
I think this probably ties in good with what Richard was saying too, that people need to be, that there needs to be an awareness of what's happening in the town because it affects everybody who's living in the town. You can't just kind of coast without understanding exactly what's happening and getting a little bit involved. And so I think it ties in really well with what, because I think there are many people in the town that had no idea that this was even happening or.
It's pretty big.
And it's, it's large. It is large when you see the construction and you see the number of, and the number of people that you can put in a three-bedroom. And I mean.
Yeah.
It's significant. So basically, you could have five children in a three-bedroom because you could have only one parent with five children in some of those apartments. And that's significant, so.
It certainly is.
September fifteenth open is way worse than August fifteenth for us, isn't it?
It is because we really, I mean, we're underway. At least if August fifteenth, we'd have a sense of how we can prepare for it. But if it's opening on September fifteenth, we may have lots of kids coming in that third week of September. I mean, they've been really good. I mean, they, I think they're going to be great in terms of the communication piece. But they don't have to be. You know, they don't, they don't have to communicate everything to us. And the, the managers that I met with are the same gentleman that managed the one, their same company development in Walpole on Route one. I think it's the Preserve.
Yes.
I think that's what it's called. And I know that that really had an influence on the enrollment in Walpole. So we'll have to.
So if they're notifying applicants on July twenty, and they, they don't plan to open until September, they'll, they'll have commitments from.
They should.
Renters. We can enroll students with a signed lease. Is that, is that right?
That's correct.
So we, I mean, maybe in August, though, that we have a, a registry request to, the warrant committee or something to add a teacher or something to the budget, right?
We could. It all depends on where they commit.
Right.
It really depends on that. We, if we have a large influx in one or two classrooms, one or two grades, we're going to have an issue. Because we want to make sure that our class sizes stay the way they are now.
Right.
We're really committed to that. So we have to look at that.
Well, I know the warrant committee is attentive to it as well.
They are.
Certainly know about it.
And one of the things they mentioned to me is that they're going to do a lottery for Medfield residents. So if you're a current Medfield resident, you have first choice. And then there was also going to be a municipal employee piece to it as well, where there's, if you are a teacher, firefighter, town hall employee, et cetera, et cetera. Then you can also go into this, into the lottery. So I'm not sure, tomorrow night is their, is their information night. So they, they sent me an email today to invite me there. There's two other events going on with school tomorrow. So I'm not sure. I could be in three places, but I'll try to, you know, try to get to, or have someone go to this to see what, what they're saying.
Thank you.
I'm sure that'll be an agenda item going forward.
Sure will.
I think I've already touched upon the evaluation training on the twenty-first with John Doria. I do have some items for district recognition, if I may. At the high school, over forty students were inducted into the Spanish Honor Society this week and eighteen into the French Honor Society and twenty-nine into the Latin Honor Society. Ninety-five students will be inducted into the National Honor Society this week. We had a successful trip to France over April break. And we have forty students signed up for the Italy trip in two thousand sixteen. And twenty currently signed up for the China trip in two thousand sixteen. Two of our students, Risa Jones and Laura Torme attended the Student Government Day in Boston. The art show last week, I don't know if you got a chance to be in the high school to see it. It was just amazing as usual. And, and Eric is gone, but our boys and girls lacrosse teams this week are both number one, division two. Which doesn't happen very often when you have the boys and girls who are number one in the state and, and division two. So congratulations to all our students for what they did and certainly a great couple of weeks at Medfield High School. At Blake, our techno-vation teams became finalists at the Microsoft, and I don't like the name, but it's Microsoft's name, Nerd Center. So we had two group, two groups of girls, coding teams led by Marjorie Heim and Diane Horvath. So we're really proud of them. Blake is leaving tomorrow morning at six AM for their DC trip, first hitting New York City, then going to DC. The art show is coming up at Blake. And then our PD on the half-day, our recent half-day, really dealt with mental health of middle school kids. And it was very well received by our teachers and our guidance department led that. So they did a really nice job with that. And we want to thank them for that. And then over, one more, Mr. Chair, over at Wheelock. I don't know if you saw my tweet, Mr. Slayson with his pink hair. So our kids raised over ten thousand dollars for the Heart Association. And Mr. Slayson said, if you raise ten thousand dollars, I will color my hair any color you want. And the kids chose pink. So we tweeted out that picture of Mr. Slayson with his new pink hairdo, which is great. So a lot of great things going on. Wheelock Reed starts next week as well. So just good stuff going on in the district as usual. And I don't know if anyone has anything to add but, but that, but I, something I probably forgot. But there's so much going on this time of year, it's, it's hard to remember it all. But just real good stuff going on. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Nobody's talking about anything but the DC trip in my house.
I bet. I bet.
Okay, so this is the part of the meeting we set aside for public input.
My name's Keith Kerbo and I'm a resident of Medfield, a former two thousand and ten Medfield grad. And I just finished my program and finished all that. And I'm actually back in Medfield to live as a resident now. And I'm just curious of, about how the school committee and how, and how the Medfield system is working to implement the new national standards in music and art and how, and how that interplays with the focus on the new Common Core standards. And I'm just interested in how we're negotiating that here in Medfield.
Well, defer to Superintendent about that, although I recently looked up and, on this issue, was looking at the Massachusetts Common Core and that, the curriculum frameworks on art are not very different. on art are not very different from, from, so I think we've been.
They're not very what?
They're not very different from the Common Core standards.
Right.
The Massachusetts curriculum frameworks, which we've been implementing for a while, but.
So the question is, the music and arts?
Right, well, so the question is, I'm curious how, and also I might be, I, I just want to know, I'm ill-informed, on how Medfield is working in implementing the new national, the Common Core standards, or if that's something that we're really focusing. I was trained in New York where it's all about Common Core, so I learned.
It sure is.
So a lot about Common Core.
Right.
And I'm just curious to see how that is affecting instruction in Medfield and just the attitude of the teachers and how, and like what kinds of issues you're negotiating with understand, coming to understand those.
Okay, now I understand. Okay. So in terms of where we are with the implementation, I think that we're still working, working through it, we're still, as they say, unpacking the standards and going through that. I would say that there's more work being done in the lower grades right now with that than, than the upper grades. I think that's, that's pretty consistent, I think, statewide. You know, one of the things, the challenges that we're finding is mathematics, because the, the Common Core needs you to teach differently. And I think that's why the last two years we've been working with a consultant at the elementary level to work with teachers on how to, how to develop units of study that reflect the Common Core instead of teaching the way you've, you've taught for the last, you know, four, five, ten years. And, and that's been a challenge. I think that our teachers have done a really nice job with it because they've gotten the support. I don't think it's been a wholeheartedly, let's drop everything and, and jump to Common Core here, like you've said in, in New York, New York is very much like that, where the Eureka Math Program came out of New York and it's strictly written by New York educators, all directly tied to Common Core. We're not there yet, and there aren't many districts in Massachusetts that are, and I think part of it is, there's a feeling statewide, teachers and administrators, that, you know, we're number one in the country for a reason. And we're working hard and our kids are learning and our parents are supportive, but we're not going to drop everything we're doing and adopt something when we're, the results speak for themselves. I think that's kind of where we're at, we're slowly doing that in, in unpacking those standards and getting to the process where we could implement some of the standards as we, but we're getting there. We're not, we're definitely not anywhere near where we, where we could be.
That was actually my next question, is what, what is your vision, like, what in the school committee's vision in regards to further implementing the Common Core standards?
So I, I think we're looking at it as a three to, three to five-year rollout. You know, I think that's what we're looking at it. You know, I have to tell you, when you're in suburban Massachusetts, there's not a huge sense of urgency to change what you're doing, quite frankly. And we haven't created that sense of urgency with Common Core yet, we're, we're working through it, and we're doing it in a very thoughtful, meaningful way, but I don't think we're, we're being hysterical and saying we drop everything and, and adopt it right away, but we're, we're working toward it. So I would say a three to five-year implementation on that.
And I think when I, you know, when I was a, when I was a new, brand-new teacher, just coming out of college myself, the curriculum frameworks were just being implemented, and we had the same kind of approach there. And I think, you know, I, I've compared the two, my wife's still a teacher, and I, I'm very interested in the issue, so I compare the Common Core and the curriculum frameworks and the overlap, and then, you know, I still think, as Dr. Marsden alluded to, we do it better in Massachusetts than sort of a nationwide standard in a lot of ways. And it was really thoughtful, I mean, as I alluded to with Mr. DeSor, you know, trying to get a social studies curriculum framework out, I think they spent more than a decade on it and could never get to it. But, you know, the science took about a decade just to get the framework out, much less to implement. You know, the English and language arts and the mathematics framework came out first, and they're the, sort of the stalwarts. And I think that what we have in Massachusetts and in Medfield in terms of implementing those are really strong, and so it's, we've, there's been a lot of reluctance statewide to abandoning those and moving to, to Common Core.
So Keith, I think that one of the issues is going to be around the testing piece. You know, so we, as a district, did not do Park this year, we stayed with MCAS as forty-eight percent of the other districts in the state did. And then, so we're looking at, we're kind of waiting to see what's going to happen with the state in, in the fall, because now it's clearly become a political issue and not a real educational issue, which sometimes these things tend to do. With, with the new governor, who is probably the only governor around that's on the record saying that he doesn't support Park. And then we have a Commissioner of Education who is the Chair of the Park Initiative, you have that natural tension there. So we're just, we're kind of waiting and seeing what's, what's going to happen for our kids in next spring, because there is, there's one thought process that says there's going to be no Park, there's going to be a new MCAS, but it's going to be a Park-like test. So it's going to be just, again, politically, the name won't be Park, but it'll be just like Park, or there could be a, a Park assessment. So that's one of the things that we're waiting on now as a district to see where that goes.
Awesome. I like what you've all said, that Massachusetts does it better, because everything I learned in my teacher preparation program showed me that Massachusetts does do it better, and Medfield does it best of anybody. And of course, we update with the times and how things change, and we keep up on the, you know, the new trends and, and all of this. But then Ms. Burke said something awesome about full-day kindergarten and the teachers getting this chance to breathe and to have that time for the education to be something that's like enjoyable and absorbing and fant, and that, that like holistic element. And with the rollout of Common Core and, and all this, I'm wondering, what are your visions and sights in terms of maintaining or fostering that that's happening so well at the moment at the, at the kindergarten level, within unpacking these? Like what, what are, what are we looking for?
I mean, I think giving the teachers the support in, in the time to do that, I think if you, like, like we did with the rollout of, of mathematics, you got to make time for teachers to do this as part of their day. They can't be asked to do this on the weekend, in the morning, before school, after school. It needs to be part of their day to, to go through this, like common planning time and the collaboration piece, that has to happen. So I think being supportive in that regard of, of giving teachers the time, because that's what teachers are looking for, they're looking for time, no matter how much time you give them, the, the school day could be nine hours and they still wouldn't be enough time. Giving them the gift of time so that they are able to work with their peers during their workday to do this collaboration. That way, they can discuss this rollout, discuss this unpacking the standards together, and then implement it in a way that's, that's thoughtful and, and paced in a way that makes sense for Medfield, and not just, again, full adoption and just abandon all the good things you've always done.
And from a school committee standpoint, when you talk about the vision, it's, it's making sure that our teachers still have the resources to do what they're doing. I think it was Tim talked about, you know, being committed to certain class sizes. You know, that's our main, one of our main roles is budget, and you can only keep, you know, a reasonable, I don't even say small class sizes, because I don't think that's the goal, but a reasonable class size, you can only do that if you have enough money to have enough teachers. And sometimes it's not even teachers, you heard Missy say that, you know, we have two adults in the classroom, one's a certified teacher, one's an aide, and, you know, that really helps the teacher be able to do everything they need to do. So from our perspective, you know, we've held the line with the warrant committee that, you know, we have a, a reasonable class size here and we're going to keep to that.
And my other question is somewhat unrelated, but it's what, what does the school committee need from, like, the community? I'm probably the only twenty-three-year-old that's shown up at the school committee meeting in, I don't know how long, but I'm wondering, what do you need from people like me or my peers, or my parents and their peers? What, what is it that we need from the community?
Watch our meetings at home even, you don't even need to come just to be, I mean, speaking from my perspective, and we just had the election in, in Medfield, and all the people had no idea what we do, and we worked so hard and so many hours and, or that people didn't realize that they, you know, all our phone numbers are in the book, that they could call us with a question, and people that you had never heard from. And, you know, we're here every other Monday night or once a month, and, you know, no one even turns on the TV. So just a little bit more awareness of, or even just turning on the TV once in a while, watching a meeting. You know, and I think it kind of does tie in with what Richard said, that a little bit of knowledge can go a long way, which is, that would be nice.
Yeah, the reason I'm here is I was rep to school committee, so I, I knew where the room was that you had.
Welcome back. Were you as good as Andy?
Nice.
Oh, no, you were the rep to the school.
I know, I was, I was the senior class rep at that point, so. Thank you for your time, and I'll probably.
Keith, what's your licensure in?
Uh, my licensure is in music.
Music, great.
And where did you go to, where, did you just graduate from?
I just finished my masters at New York University. And I'm coming back to Medfield because what I saw and learned there really made me appreciate and understand that, like, that Medfield did do it best, and just the, the ridiculous preparation I had to, like, it's, when I got there, it, it was easier when I got to college. Like, the writing especially is just far and above, what I subbed, I subbed in a sixth grade English class, and it was just like ridiculous. The, the level of writing was far better than the high school kids that I was teaching, it was insane. And then the, the musicians that, the musicians that I was teaching at the high school level were hardly, hardly near the, just beyond the beginners at the Dale Street level. So like, that's why I'm back here.
Welcome back.
Awesome.
Thanks, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Future agenda items then. So school improvement plans are on for our next meeting, is that right?
Do we want to talk about the next meeting? Do we want to?
Oh, I was just going to say, at the end of that, I was, I think we're going to reschedule the next meeting to the eighth, or I know at least there's a Blake Band Concert, I think that's what I've got in my account, one of my kids does a concert on the first, a couple of other people have conflicts on the first, so.
So we're going to do the eighth and the fifteenth in June then, correct?
Yes. So do you want to split the improvement plans over two meetings?
We are.
Okay. As Dr. Marsden alluded to, there'll be a presentation on the K math, K to five math, new curriculum program next, at our next meeting. Talk about research and development initiatives for two thousand and fifteen.
Some really good, just, if I could introduce, sorry. The teachers have put together some unbelievable present, proposals for research and development over the summer. I just want to share some of those with you, they're just ready to do some great work this summer.
Terrific. An update on the Dale Street pilot study, and some revisions to the acceptable use policy.
Correct. So we have a subcommittee of, actually the tech administration committee that's going over the acceptable use policy, and they feel like because we're doing so much with technology right now, we need to update that policy.
Okay.
So I would like to get the subcommittee together prior, we're, we're actually meeting on Tuesday so that I can bring what they've worked on to the subcommittee, school committee subcommittee, and then hopefully maybe on the eighteenth, excuse me, on the fifteenth, we'll be able to take a look at that.
Okay, so that's, is that Mary Ann?
That's Mary Ann.
And Eileen?
Yeah.
Okay, so we could have that hopefully for the meeting on the eighth to, to review and vote on the fifteenth, isn't it?
I don't know. It might have to be the fifteenth, and then we can look at it.
And then August?
In August, yeah.
And is that also addressing some of the issues the teachers have raised with respect to acceptable use?
It is, absolutely.
All right. That is all for the agenda. You guys have anything to add?
Um, well, Student Council, the underclassmen just put on Senior Rick, I think Erin touched on it, but it was really great, they did such a good job and everyone felt included, so it was great. And then we just, before this, actually had our banquet, so the E-board turned over and the new juniors and sophomores are now the E-board, so next meeting you'll meet the new rep to the school committee. Her name is Nikki, and she's great, so you guys will love her. And I just want to say thank you so much for including me in your meetings, and I learned so much throughout the year, so I really appreciate it.
Well, thanks.
Congratulations. Really, you know, I forgot to ask Andy and Erin, were kids staying more towards the end of prom? There was an issue raised a couple of years ago about people leaving dances, including prom, you know, fifteen minutes after they got there.
I think, well, I think the buses are actually a great part of prom now, because they're more inclined to leave when the buses leave, so they're staying till at least ten, which is actually, I know that doesn't even seem late, but it's so much later than what you, they would if the buses weren't there. And then some people stay till eleven as well.
We didn't have dinner till eight fifteen, eight twenty, so it was, you know, so that's part of it too, so the, I thought they stayed, I thought they stayed later this year than last year.
I think so too. Yeah, it was great to see, prom's so much fun.
It's the one night of the week I will lay awake in bed worrying about being a school committee member.
Didn't they have a raffle at the end to kind of encourage people to stay? Or something, GoPros?
I know, I think they might implement that next year, because we were really short on time. We loved the idea, but the fundraiser that we were going to put on for it, it was so just short on time with the turnover for.
Oh, so that's an idea for next year.
So we wanted to do it this year, it just didn't go through, but we love the idea, so we're hoping they'll do it next year.
Great. Thank you.
Uh, I just wanted to note, the Blake Jazz Band won gold at their, I don't know, is it M.I.G.A. or so, I, I forget, sorry?
M.A.J.D.
Thank you. So, my son plays piano, anyways, but they did a great job, and there's some local schools, and that was brilliant. And I want to thank Matt Bond for hosting. It was an acad, acad, or recognition discussion where parents, students, we had some freshmen, we had some seniors, we had math teachers, parents, just talk about the, the relevance, or not, even so much the relevance, just a discussion about academic recognition. And, you know, and, and there are so many different ways to look at it and age appropriateness, anyways, it was a wonderful discussion. And my take-home, there were a lot of take-homes, but a big take-home for me, and I think a lot of the people there, were the one-to-one relationships that teachers have with the students, and that motivates a lot of students, once people actually look at you and take the time to know you. And so that, that was quite profound, you know, because we just think it's grades, 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 and yes, it is, but it's also connections. So I appreciated that discussion.
Thank you for going, I wanted to go, I couldn't get out of work.
It was really, it was really good. And I'm so psyched for the techno-vation people, Jeff did mention it, but now one of those two teams is a nationwide finalist.
Right.
Awesome. And they've got a great app, it's about, I believe it's about volunteer opportunities for middle school students in your area. So it's a really cool concept.
It's a great concept.
And these girls rocked it. I love that.
Great.
So that's it.
I just have a couple of things, the, the Dale Street principal search that Anna and Anna May and I participated in was such a great group of people. I mean, every, every search that we do in Medfield is this big group of, and it can be intimidating to the people coming in, but it's just a great group of people that, you know, share opinions, and I think it works really well. And it was a great group this time too, searching for the Dale Street principals. So that was exciting to work with people that I personally have never worked with before on other searches, so that was nice. And also the sixth-grade geology field trip, maybe not always the coolest thing for kids, at least that's what they say, but when you can learn about geology and being a former prosecutor and everything was set up as a crime scene, I think I was more excited than the sixth graders. Because it was amazing, I think, the amazing that, the work that this sixth-grade team put into that field trip. that field trip. I mean, and everybody, I mean, from English teachers to, it wasn't just science. Everybody was involved and taking part in it, and it was so fun to see. I mean, they had caution tape all around town, and you had to look at all this. It was just really great. And, you know, a couple of people had said to me, you know, why are they taking iPads? That's ridiculous. They shouldn't be doing that. And when I, everything was on the iPad. They were taking, you know, photos of evidence, like a real crime scene. I mean, it was, it was great. And, you know, then they were going to take it back and discuss it, so it was such a great use of technology and being out in nature. It was, I was super impressed with the sixth-grade class. They just did a great job, those teachers. In addition, the lacrosse game on Friday night, I was literally speeding. I was hoping that I would only get caught in Medfield, so maybe I could work my way out of it a little bit if it was Bob Meany or somebody, because I was racing to get to that game from another lacrosse game. And the way that, whatever team it is, whether it's, you know, the older students, that, the way they include younger students, and the way they included, you know, my son's lacrosse practice was canceled, everything was canceled to look, so that they could go to the game to support that team, and that young people, no matter what it is, whether it's the sixth graders looking at the 12th graders in a violin concert, whether it's the little lacrosse players looking at the big lacrosse players, the way they see what hard work can attain. And when we were leaving, it wasn't just the hard worker winning that game, although the win was really sweet. It was when we were leaving, my kids said to me, and I had the three of them, and they said, "Mom, everyone is so well behaved." And I said, "That's the lesson. It's about sportsmanship." And even, even congratulations to Duxbury, because they were such good sports after such a devastating loss for them. But the sportsmanship on both sides was so commendable, and to include, like, all those kids was just a nice, nice thing to do, and very classy thing for Medfield to do. And then finally just...
Although at one point, Robert Harg and I looked over and saw probably...
Oh, no, Sullivan.
I saw one Sullivan. Probably 150 Medfield kids with sticks running around. I looked at them and said, "What could go wrong with this?" But it was, you know, that area where they play football, the football games, and all of them running around. It was hilarious, but they did a nice job including them kids.
It was. That was fantastic, you know, and everybody had some kind of Medfield blue on. It was very cool. I mean, just finally, a safe trip to all the eighth graders going to DC. That's a big, exciting trip for them, so...
Great. I, Duxbury in particular, they don't have a lot of experience with losing, so it's really impressive.
Yeah, it was super, they were impressive too.
They don't lose that often, ever really.
No, they don't. I think only the fifth time since 2002. So, and they were, they were, they were impressive as well, so...
Great. I'm going to hold anything in terms of great news to hope that we get good news tomorrow, and I do wish the eighth grade a terrific trip. My daughter keeps asking if we'll miss her, and of course we will, but we can't miss her until she leaves.
We can follow them on Twitter.
Right, we will.
Yeah, I don't, see, Blake put together that Twitter workshop.
Is it Blake in DC?
It's Blake in DC and VMS ED. Nat had that Twitter workshop, but I got canceled at least once for snow. I don't know if it ever got rescheduled. Whatever it was, I couldn't go, because I can't figure out how to follow hashtag. You're going to have Peachman to do this. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
A second. All favor eye approach.
Hi, this is Pete Peterson. You are watching medfield.tv.